Good afternoon, I'm Eric Holcomb of KLWN Radio. We welcome you here this afternoon. Welcome to the Voter Education Coalition and KLWN 2017 General Election City Commission Candidate Forum. The Voter Education Coalition is a nonpartisan organization that sponsors candidate forums, meet and greets, and other events to educate citizens about candidates and their policies. You can learn more about VEC events anytime by visiting their webpage at www.votereducationcoalition.org. This forum will be available on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, Midco Channel 25, and on the Voter Education Coalition's Facebook and website. New FM 101.7 and 1320 KLWN will be airing a replay of this forum several times over the next few weeks, and we're live at this moment. And will also be available at a later time at klwn.com. We would like to thank the City of Lawrence and their staff for the use of the City Commission Meeting Room and all their help in making this event possible. The candidates are here, the rules for this forum are simple. I will be asking questions submitted by the Voter Education Coalition Partners and audience members. Each question will have a designated 60-second response time. At the end of this period, you'll hear a bell with Julie Hacknix to me, and we'll move to the next candidate or question. We will rotate the order of responses between each candidate. There will be no rebuttals and no questions from the candidates. Prior to each response from the candidates, we will also acknowledge each candidate by name here on the radio so that listeners will know whose voice they are hearing. With that, let's begin. First question. Why do you consider yourself the best candidate for City Commission? And we'll begin in alphabetical order. Candidate Jennifer Ananda.
I believe that I am a unique candidate for this position for many reasons. Primary of that is the fact that I have a law degree as well as a master's degree in social welfare. And I've developed my career over the past 10 years to work in the format of policy. So as an attorney, I have provided direct representation on a number of issues, which gives me insight into the law. But the social work piece really comes in when we're looking at how our laws and how our ordinances affect humans. This is a vital piece of policy work, and I don't think it's a skill that a lot of people have. I'm very proud of this skill. I also understand the way that organizations work. I've done community organizing, I've done criminal justice reform. And throughout my career, we've provided information and testimony on legislation that was proposed that would affect individuals in the area in which I worked. So I believe that I bring that set of skills to the table.
Next candidate, Mike Anderson.
Hello, my name is Mike Anderson. I believe I'd be a strong candidate for City Commission because of my knowledge of the city and expertise in critical analysis. I have a PhD in Communication Studies from KU, where I taught courses in behavioral research methods, problem solving in teams and groups, public speaking, persuasive speaking. I was also fortunate enough to teach at Haskell as well, published in peer-reviewed journals, books, newspapers. And when it comes to being able to siphon through lots of information, synthesize data, look at good argument versus bad argument, good evidence versus bad evidence, I believe I can do that. I think my strong knowledge of the city makes me an ideal candidate. For numerous years, I also worked on KU, but I also worked in the entertainment industry, showcasing the arts and culture of Lawrence, interacting with community leaders, running CEOs of not-for-profits businesses. And I ran two years ago. And through that process and this process, I believe I have a strong pulse of the city, the issues we're facing now, and the issues for the future.
Next candidate, Basim Shaheen.
I believe I'd be a strong candidate because I will help guide our community into a future based on progress. And when I say progress, no one is left behind. I'll be listening to you, and I'll be listening to you, and not just a privileged few. I want a city where my son and daughter can pursue their dreams freely, and I want the same thing for every single citizen of Florence, Kansas. I bring in the expertise of trying to figure out growth with balance. And in doing so, my three main platforms is economic development, safety for all Lawrence citizens, and tax reform. Thank you.
Our next candidate, Matthew Herbert.
I think what I bring to this election is experience. What we face as a city is the fact that with Mike Amick's retirement from the City Commission, we were looking at a City Commission in 2018 where there will be no one seated, regardless of the outcome of our election here with more than three years of experience. I think it's going to be vital, as a result, that we retain people who have some experience and some leadership. One of the things that I'm going to provide here is finishing what we started. Over the past two years, we've made great strides in the way of producing economic development opportunities while at the same time balancing the needs of our community. Needs such as mental health, needs such as affordable housing, needs such as long-term planning. We have, for the first time in our city's history, a CIP that looks out beyond just next year. We have, for the first time, some real long-range vision for our community. And I feel the risk of throwing off the incumbents is that we start fresh. We have a need for leadership in this community going forward, and that experience is what I can bring, being the only currently elected member up for reelection.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, I would just like for the voters to take a look at what I've done in the past two years as well as in my career. I am a 22-year former small business owner that I started in 1992 and I sold it in 2014. And I'm also a court mediator, that I work at the Douglas County Courts on a volunteer basis. And I've been on the commission for two years, and I would ask that the folks look at what we've done. We've brought more transparency to government. We have changed to a priority-based budgeting system. We are looking at ways to become more efficient with our operations. And so I would just ask that you look at what I've done, as well as what I've proposed to do.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Hello, everybody. I'm grateful to be here. I do also have the experience, I feel make me a great City Commissioner, in that my leadership was gained by working on a factory floor, moving up within six months to becoming a team leader that oversaw teams anywhere from four to 10 people. And these were in very dangerous conditions, hot and cold. Then I also have combat experience where I also learned critical thinking skills. In tight situations, I understand how to react under high-pressure and under low-pressure situations. I'll be able to do that. On top of that, I've taken the time over the last year to study the city code, to come to the City Commission meetings in full since, I believe it was April or March. And I've also been reading all the agendas, studying the notes. And when I don't understand something, I build a rapport with the city staff that will allow me to hit the ground running. I'm not going to have to build that rapport when I am elected, I already have it with the city staff. You've heard me get out and knock doors and talk with you across the city. You know I'm a hard worker, and I'll continue that for all of you when I'm elected. Thank you.
Onto our second question of the forum tonight. What have you done in the past few years to improve Lawrence? What have you done in the past few years to improve Lawrence? And this time, we'll begin with Mike Anderson.
Great question. I've had the opportunity to work with over a dozen not-for-profits with their fundraising and helping them emcee. For example, just last night, I was the emcee for the Lights On Talent Show for the Boys and Girls Club. Through my work at Channel 6, I've been able to engage with the community through this route and work for so many not-for-profits and help them with their fundraising because I believe such in the importance that they provide this community. And also through our show, we were able to really showcase and highlight the arts and culture of this town, which in my opinion is so paramount to our identity. If there was a brochure for Lawrence, Kansas, it'd be ridiculous not to have the arts on the first or second page of that brochure. And through that job and through my ability, I was able to do so. And I think that highlighting the arts and culture of Lawrence, working with so many not-for-profits, also teaching at KU and Haskell and helping our students become better citizens in their own right and better thinkers, and hopefully entrepreneurs, and creative believers. And I hope to continue that work.
Basim Shaheen.
What have I done to help Lawrence the past few years? Other than hiring about 30 employees and making sure that they're employed in Lawrence, Kansas, and making sure that their ability to move forward, that's, you know? So I did that, helped employ in Lawrence, Kansas, as well. I never in my life donated money. And for the first time ever, a few years ago, I donated to the Boys and Girls Club for their new teen center. So that is the biggest thing that I've ever done, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
Well, in addition to serving since April of 2015 on the Lawrence City Commission, I've also devoted my entire professional career to working in the public schools, of which the last six years has been spent at Lawrence High School. You know, my entire professional career has been devoted to public service, first in the public school system and now as a member of the City Commission. And one of the ways I try to demonstrate that I'm doing this, to serve my community and not just to better myself, is that since my election on April 7th of 2015, I've donated the entirety of my City Commission salary to charity within the community. And I think that this is a reflection of, you know, the roots of establishing this community, that my service is for this community, not for self. But over the past two years as a member of the commission, I think we've made some huge strides in providing a better life for people in this community. Huge strides in the way of bike pedestrian infrastructure, huge strides in the way of affordable housing, huge strides in the way of revising our incentive program to make sure that incentivized projects benefit the community as a whole and not just an individual developer. I stand behind what we've done on the City Commission for the last two years, I'm very proud of it.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, I've been on the City Commission, as you know, for the last two years, almost two years to the date. I was appointed October 6th of 2015. And I think being a part of the commission, we have done so much to change actually the face of how government is operating from City Hall. We have incorporated methods for more transparent budget, more transparency in our budget system. We're looking at priority-based budgeting, which works on your needs versus your wants. We are looking at the way our operations are happening. We are looking at combining some of our operations to become more financially efficient. And we've, for the first time, have started to actually provide funding for affordable housing as well as for mental health with our police department. So I think I've done quite a bit in the last two years on the City Commission. I'm something I'm really proud of, and I'm proud of our commission for doing it. Thank you.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
I've taken, well, I'm a retired veteran, so I don't have a whole lot of money to spend. And I'm thankful for those that have donated so much. So what I give is my time to various nonprofits and volunteer groups around town to help them give rides to people, to various activities around town when they need so. I've also become a member of the Board of Directors for Independence, Inc., which helps people with disabilities be able to find housing and employment throughout the city and throughout Douglas County. So these are just a few of the things that I've done. And in between the election or the campaign cycle beginning, I've really worked hard to get to know people across Lawrence to start building bridges between the various groups that are out there. I've learned through knocking a lot of doors, people feel that there's this divide in Lawrence. And I want to bridge that divide because we're not that big of a city. We can't really afford to start having these problems where one side of the city is arguing with the other. We don't have time for that right now. We have a lot of other issues in front of us that we need to face. And I feel I can bridge that gap and starting that work right now. Thank you.
Jennifer Ananda.
Currently, I am on my third term on the Community Mercantile Board of Directors. I served as president of that organization for two years. One of the things that we support through the Community Mercantile, in addition to cooperative governance and really helping our owners, which is our community, is shopping local, and many of my dollars are spent locally. I would say most of my dollars. I'm also on the Prairie Moon Waldorf School Board of Trustees, which is a school that my children attend. And I am currently the president of that board. I have engaged in raising a family in this community. And if anybody else is doing that, you know how many activities our community supports and sponsors, and how, what a wonderful place it is to raise a family in. I support organizations by, when I had a law office, providing sliding-scale legal representation for victims of intimate partner violence. I taught at KU in the MSW and BSW program, giving back to students my expertise on the area of intimate partner violence. And now I do discrimination harassment investigations through the University of Kansas, where I'm doing my part to reduce the recurrence of intimate partner violence and sexual violence in Lawrence.
Question three of today's forum is about leadership. And we move on to question three. What has been your most difficult leadership challenge? What has been your most difficult leadership challenge? And for this question, we'll begin with Basim Shaheen.
Last year, I ran for a county commission, and this year, I'm doing the City Commission. I think the hardest role is trying to find the in-between. Sorry, I'm trying to make this make sense. Okay. Trying to let the people of Florence understand where I come from and why I feel going traveling around the world in the United Arab Emirates and Japan, and trying to bring like the infrastructure and the fact that I'm not knowledgeable enough and the fact that I'm not, I don't know why I'm tense right now. But anyways, trying to get into the people's mind and to why I should be the right person to do this, even though I am not experienced in it, but I know it can be done to make Lawrence grow. I don't have to be, as long as they know that I'm about growth and trying to bring the best into Lawrence.
Matthew Herbert.
As a member of the Lawrence City Commission, my greatest leadership challenge occurred just within about 90 days of my serving on the commission. And that was when the mayor of our city, Jeremy Farmer, resigned his position and faced criminal charges. Out of that began a process of transparency where we showed the community that we were going to rise above this and become better than this. And that through that process, having the leadership to put forth a package that enabled us to select Lisa Larson as the fifth City Commissioner, I'm incredibly proud of our decision. I, you know, I'm incredibly proud of the service that Lisa has provided to the city. And I think that we showed great leadership in making that selection and putting that process together. Outside of the City Commission, my greatest leadership challenge happens every single day. And that is, I teach senior government. I have to work to make 18-year-olds buy into the process and make 18-year-olds believe in the system. And, you know, I have sitting in the second row here, one of my former students. And the fact that I have a former student of mine engaged in local government right now, I think is probably one of my greatest wins as a person.
Lisa Larson.
I think one of my biggest challenges outside of the City Commission right now is running my business that I had for 22 years. The balance between having to treat your employees correctly, operate in a positive financial manner, and then also ethically, to make sure you're ethically running your business correctly. Those are all challenges, and there's a balance there you have to have. And it's an ongoing, everyday need that you've got to do. And that, for 22 years, we did that with my employees, and I'm really proud of that fact. With the City Commission, there's the balance, again, it's another balance of listening to the citizens, listening to the experts, doing the research, and making sure that the decision you make is based on the voice of all people.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Basim, I'm with you. I'm a little nervous too, brother, it's okay. And for me right now, I've got my heart racing, my muscles are tense. As I remember sitting as a point man in a combat patrol in a Husky vehicle. You're all alone in there, you don't have a weapon other than your M4 sitting right next to you. You're relying on the patrol behind you, and you're looking for the bombs going five miles an hour down the road. And when you find one, you've got to call it out, and you've got to stay calm while you're sitting right on top of this bomb that's 100 to 200 pounds of explosive. You're just counting on your vehicle, doing its job if that thing goes off and keeping you alive, and making sure you are clear and calm as you communicate with the rest of your patrol. And they're going to, you keep your eyes on that, and you're also looking out around for any trigger men. And you're relaying what you're seeing to your combat patrol as they're setting up a cordon, and we're guiding with each other. So that's one of the leadership experiences I gained during my time in Iraq, and I know how to translate that into here for the City Commission and for all of Lawrence.
Jennifer Ananda.
So in my work at KU, we call ourselves the Office of Difficult Conversations because that's what we do on a daily basis, is have difficult conversations that generally one isn't comfortable having on a day-to-day basis. I think that some of the most difficult leadership challenges, particularly in board work, is, and I think that translates well to being on the City Commission, is hearing things that maybe are uncomfortable for you. Especially criticisms that hit home, that might be correct and probably are correct, but we're not used to hearing them because they really are paradigm-shifting conversations. And it really takes the humility to step back and listen, rather than being reactive, to hear what's being said and to acknowledge what can be done and what can't be done moving forward in order to resolve the issues that we're facing. I think that Lawrence is in the middle of a lot of difficult conversations. I feel like my leadership experience, having many of those conversations through my board work, through my current employment, have prepared me to be able to handle those conversations with humility and grace, which is what I think those conversations require.
Mike Anderson.
For me, one of the most difficult leadership experiences lately has been handling disappointment. In June of this year, my station manager informed me that Channel 6, a community-run channel that served this community for 45 years, was being basically let go and gotten rid of. And that included our show. And that involved me going up to our group of people who helped me write the show and perform it and telling them to their face that, sorry, all your six years of dedication, hard work, and helping make this community better, some new people came in and didn't see it that way. That was really difficult for me. And we were told that we only had 10 shows left. And that to be able to sort of rise above that bad news and make those 10 shows the best we could possibly, and I will stand by that last show that we did wholeheartedly, is being a great homage to not only the hard work of the people on that show, but also the people in Lawrence that I got to experience my time here with and that I was able to showcase through that. And I think that's true leadership, persevere through difficulty, and that's what we were able to do.
Again, you're listening to the Voter Education Coalition and KLWN 2017 General Election City Commission Candidate Forum. The Voter Education Coalition, a nonpartisan organization that sponsors candidate forums, meet and greets, and other events to educate citizens about candidates and their policies. You can learn more at votereducationcoalition.org. This forum is live now and will be available on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, Midco Channel 25, and on the Voter Education Coalition's Facebook and website. New FM 101.7 and 1320 KLWN is live at this time, and we'll be airing a replay of this forum several times over the next few weeks leading up to the general election November 7th. As we continue on with our questions, candidates, question number four. Considering the socioeconomic makeup of Lawrence, what is the ideal balance between sales and property taxes? Considering the socioeconomic makeup of Lawrence, what is the ideal balance between sales and property taxes? And this time, we begin with Matthew Herbert.
Okay. I think Lawrence is in a very unique position. I think all of us up here are going to identify the fact that sales taxes, by its very nature, are regressive tax and therefore needs to be used very carefully. But one of the unique things about Lawrence is the fact that this is a community that brings in a lot of outside traffic. We are, as Mike Anderson talks about, really the arts and culture capital of our state. And through events, we hold downtown from Free State Festival, where we brought in 8,000 people to watch George Clinton put on a live concert on Mass Street, to, you know, other events that we're able to do in this community. You go to Allen Fieldhouse during a KU basketball game and you walk through the parking lot, you're going to see a scattering of counties other than Douglas Park there. I tell you all of that because we need to keep that in mind as we plan our budget. Right now, the City of Lawrence budget is disproportionately heavy in the way of sales tax versus property tax compared to other communities. And the reason for that is because we're able to bring so many people into our community, we're able to capitalize on that as a community and really thank our guests for coming into our community and especially thank them for leaving behind their sales tax dollars. I would look to continue that balance.
Lisa Larson.
You know, it's absolutely correct what Matthew had said regarding the fact that we can bring in such a high tourist number for Lawrence. And we've done many things in the past several years to actually enhance that. We've got Rock Chalk Park now, we have more festivals than I've ever seen in the last few years that we're having. And we need to continue on that. Now, the balance between sales and property tax, as we know from our budget, it used to be that property taxes was about 60, and it was 40. Now, it's just the opposite, where sales tax is more like about a 60-40. So we need to not, you know, to continue with all of the, bringing in all the outside sales tax. We want to continue with that, but also understand that we need to broaden that tax base to kind of help some of that tax burden, and that's what I would like to see done.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Well, I can agree with Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Larson. They stated the facts, nothing you can disagree with about the percentages that are there. So again, some of the items that they didn't talk about was the Junior Olympics that came in, the Hardwood Classic. Again, this is just reinforcing the fact that we really do rely on tourism through our sales tax dollars. And so we need to make sure we're investing wisely in explore Lawrence and also bringing in under entities that benefit from our tourism through the transient guest tax. And I also think we need to make sure that as we talk about property taxes, a lot of people have to remember, these are what pay for the services. This is what pay for your police, your roads, this is what pays for the fire and other emergency services. So when you say you don't want more property taxes, we have to cap out on what services we can provide as a city to the whole public. And we just need more people to be aware of that fact.
Jennifer Ananda.
I don't think that we can ever strike an ideal balance, but we can continue to strive to do that. I think that there are many considerations that we should look at, though, every time we make a decision regarding taxes. Recognizing that sales taxes are regressive, recognizing that we do have a growing visitor industry in our community. Going door-to-door, I talk to a lot of aging individuals who live on a fixed income that is not growing with the rate of inflation, and that's a concern. Losing their home because they aren't able to afford it anymore, including accessibility of their home as well. I think that we also see a lot of young families who are struggling. And sales tax and property tax affects them both very greatly. I also think we have to look at what we can legally fund with these different taxes and where those need to come from. So there are a lot of issues to consider, and I think that we have to continue striving to, one, raise taxes as little as possible regardless of what kind of taxes they are. And two, when we do, ask for people's hard-earned money. We are justifying that and showing our work and being accountable.
Mike Anderson.
Sure, this ratio of property sales needs to be flipped, flipped, absolutely. We can do everything we can, Eric, to grow our tax base. The commission or individuals on this table talked about bringing outside dollars, absolutely. And hopefully, we get a conference center that helps do more of that. I think we've all seen the benefit that the conference center has gone to Manhattan, Kansas, going from $550 million in retail sales in 2000 to $1.1 billion in 2016. But it's not just bringing in outside tourists and the tourists, it's understanding that we've got leakage in Lawrence. For example, when I was doing talking today, I talked to a woman who's lived in Lawrence since 1970 and never once in any time in that day has she ever worked in Lawrence. She pays her gas in Topeka, she does all of her retail in Topeka, she's never done a lunch in Lawrence during her workday week. And that's something we need to be aware of. And that comes with bringing more jobs to this area, business expansion retention, encouraging more entrepreneurship, which counts for 20% of job growth. And I think we need to be aware of those benefits, not only bringing in outside tourism, certainly, but to controlling our very own leakage. The people who are living in Lawrence are spending their dollars in Lawrence as well.
Basim Shaheen.
Just like what Matthew said, sales tax is regressive. But I do believe that we have a good strategic plan when it comes to sales and property tax, but not when it comes to comprehensive planning. I believe we can work on a comprehensive plan where we can put a cap on poverty tax for people 65 and older with one house and with proper budgeting.
Question five of today's forum. Name two or three policies that you support that would make Lawrence a more livable city. Name two or three policies that you support that would make Lawrence a more livable city. And this time, we begin with Lisa Larson.
I think one of the ones that we have been talking about recently and modified this past year was our economic development policy. past year was our economic development policy. And I think that it is bringing forth the fruits of what we've laid out, and that is we're bringing in some industrial businesses out to Venture Park. And if we can continue to broaden some tax base, that's going to provide that much more tax relief for homeowners, and then also, I think, would increase our livability as we bring in better-paying jobs. I think other policies that we have is we've, I think we've done a really good job with addressing our social service needs. We continue to support those very strongly, and I would continue with that policy that we provide the funding that is needed to make sure our social networks are strong.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Well, I agree with Commissioner Larson concerning the social services that we support, though we do need to increase in that area as the asks were far larger than we had budgeted. And so we need to find a way to increase what they're asking for so that they can provide more services for those people in need across our city. And when we do that, the productivity of those citizens that have been helped increases, which then does contribute more back into our tax base. Also, Commissioner Herbert mentioned earlier the CIP, that's another policy I fully support. As he said earlier, we have a plan several years concerning our infrastructure, concerning other projects that need to be handled within the city that have been backpedaled over the years. So let's continue with that and work together as a community. If we're not getting a project right now, recognize that over time we will with this plan.
Jennifer Ananda.
So there have been several policies that have been presented that I'm excited to hear more about as we progress. But in particular, criminal justice reform, including the Citizen Review Council, I'm not getting that name right, regarding discriminatory policing. I think that is incredibly important, but I think it comes in conjunction with broader criminal justice reform, which we are also seeing out of the county. And they're doing some really amazing work on an incredibly difficult topic, combining the work with the city, mental health services, addiction services, and our criminal justice response to our residents to ensure that their lives are better, and that we are doing what we do better. Additionally, I think that planning, which has been one of the things that I've talked about since I started running, you know, we are developing our Horizon 2020 Plan, and we are continuing the process of honing that. I know that we can't bind our city financially in the future, but we have a CIP process that has been phenomenal. I like seeing the road that we intend to take, and I think that we can do more of that and better.
Mike Anderson.
I like a lot of the policies we're going towards, especially with economic development. I think the Catalyst Program is a good idea. Recruitment out to Venture Park, absolutely. But every economic agency in textbook will tell you recruitment, that economic recruitment is strong, but you can't base your whole economic game plan on recruitment. Instead, you focus on BRE, Business Retention, Expansion, and Entrepreneurship. And that's what I want to bring more of to the city commission. Another policy I want to talk about is any policy involving walkability in bike lanes. Our Safe Routes programs are ingenious, and I absolutely want them, love them. I want to encourage every kid who's able to bike or walk to school to do so. That's why I was so enthusiastic about the Ninth Street Arts Quarter Project. Here you have another example of a way to, if we're, if we really mean about these policies of walkability and bike lanes and new urbanism, this would give us an opportunity to showcase that, in our arts, and it would have improved social cohesion in the city. So the economic development policies, all the policies involving, now we have on our CIP about making Lawrence a much more walkable, bike-friendly community, boy, I'm all for it.
Basam Shaheen.
I'm going to go ahead and mimic what Lisa and Mike just said. Economic development policies for sure. We need primary businesses into Lawrence, we need to fill up Venture Park. We paid a lot of tax money in that place, and it's still empty. We need to do something and fill it up. And we need to bring in businesses that will hire Lawrence citizens, and that will make sure that they pay livable wages. But yeah, so bringing in primary businesses, bringing money from outside Lawrence into Lawrence is a must. Another also is the infrastructure policy, the CIP, of course. We need to make sure that the infrastructure is safe, that we have the freight and the, what's that word that I'm looking for, logistics available to, because of that, primary businesses will come into Lawrence, and it's very advantageous for us as well. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
One of the things we talk about when we talk about affordable housing is putting people in homes. But what gets forgotten about a lot is the policies we do that enable people to stay in their homes. And one of the things that we can do is be on the lookout for property tax increases. So one of the policies that I've helped, you know, spearhead and vote for, as has Commissioner Larson, was the Catalyst Program. And I think the beauty of the Catalyst Program, that's not getting talked about enough, is that within 48 hours of passage of the Catalyst Program, we had interest immediately calling our city to develop an Venture Park. Here's why that's so necessary. If we don't develop out those lots, the city taxpayers are on the hook for $9.6 million in special assessments. Enabling us to fill that park is going to keep all of you from paying $9.6 million. Secondly, I'm incredibly proud of the work we've done in the way of mental health. We are the first commission in a decade to restore funding to the RAP program through Burt and Ash, which enables mental health services to be provided to our youth in the school system. And third, and finally, I'm incredibly interested in looking at a plan that not only develops affordable housing, but actually scatterplots it. So we're not just creating affordable housing on one street and creating haves-and-have-not neighborhoods, but throughout the community.
Our next question here on today's City Commission Candidate Forum. Do you feel safe in Lawrence? Why or why not? Do you feel safe in Lawrence? Why or why not? And this time, we begin with Dustin Stumbling Bear.
I feel perfectly safe in Lawrence. I've toured the police facilities, the investigative training facility, and the downtown facility. I've done ride-alongs with the police. I've seen how they respond and how they handle citizens across the community. I've dealt with the police on my own a few times in my time in Lawrence, and they've always been polite, and they've always been courteous and professional. So I don't doubt that maybe there are instances where bias comes into play and bad situations occur, but we need to have those reported, and we need to get those facts forward. Just making assertions with no facts doesn't help us really fix any of these problems or find any of these officers to help them or reprimand them, I should say. So I feel safe. I know many don't, and I apologize to that if I seem unappreciative of that fact, but I do. And I just hope that people get to know our police a little bit better, and you'll be able to understand how hard they work for us each and every day.
Jennifer Ananda.
Yes, I feel safe in our community, but I walk with a lot of privilege where I go. I am white appearing. I am a woman, but I am a strong and confident woman who feels pretty confident walking down the street alone at night. Not everybody feels that way, because not everybody has had the privilege that I've had throughout my life in feeling safe walking down the street. So am I safe? Yeah. In most cases, I am safe. I've certainly never, through the 17 years that I've been here, been attacked while walking down the street. Again, I acknowledge that this comes from a place of privilege, and living in student housing or near campus. But acknowledging that I feel safe isn't enough. We need all of our residents to be safe, and that is the important piece. Because whether someone is doing something perfectly fine, or something that could potentially have legal liability of some sort for them, we have to make sure that they feel safe physically in what they're doing, without a threat from law enforcement or other authorities in our community. I don't think that's a huge problem, but I do think it's something that we need to have a conversation about and be realistic about.
Mike Anderson.
Yes, Eric, I do feel safe. I have complete confidence in Lawrence Police Department. I've had a chance to tour their facility several times. I'm actually doing a ride-along tonight, and I have utter confidence in their abilities and strengths. The Fire Department as well, what Chief Bradford is doing, I have full confidence in him. Emergency Medical Services will be there whenever I need them. But I understand that I'm me, and I can only speak for myself in this avenue, Eric, of course, and that others might not feel safe. My job as a city commissioner is to certainly work with the, all the parties involved to make sure everyone feels safe. And I think that especially paramount when it comes to downtown and Mass Street. Mass Street, in my opinion, is the biggest tourist attraction off Kansas, and it would be really disheartening to see a Mass Street where people had a negative stigma towards, and they didn't feel safe, they didn't want to bring their families downtown. So that would be certainly one thing I'm working toward, is it cameras downtown, I strongly believe in those. Is it more police presence? I don't know that answer at the moment. But I do wholeheartedly believe that safety is certainly, when I doorknock, is one of the first things that people talk to me about, and that sentiment does not go unnoticed.
Hi.
Basam Shaheen.
Oh, thank you so much. So I'm an Arab-American, and I feel safe in Lawrence, Kansas. I feel so safe in Lawrence, Kansas, that just the other day, my dad got in a car wreck in Highway 40, and in just literally four minutes, the ambulance was there to pick him up and take him to the hospital. It's that safe. It was quick response. I love Lawrence, and I think it's very safe. Until recently, when the shooting happened downtown, I'm a downtown business owner. I felt it. I felt not, I felt how it affected my business. It did become a lot slower downtown at nighttime, after midnight. And I truly believe that yes for police presence in every corner, from 12 to 3 o'clock at least, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, from 12 to 3 a.m., from 7th Street to 10th Street. Having a police presence there will definitely help, and that's what I have. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
Yes, I grew up in this community, went to middle school, high school, college in this community, and I can say with absolute certainty that in my life experience, I have felt safe. But I also understand that there are those who don't. And our number-one job as the city commission is public safety. This involves not only public safety through infrastructure projects, traffic calming, but also public safety for residents as they go downtown. I'll tell you, in my conversations with Chief of Police, one of the things they talk about isn't a shortage of actual on-foot patrol police officers that we face in this community, but a shortage of detectives. Based on the population of this community, most of the data suggests we should have somewhere between 22 and 24 detectives on staff at the Lawrence Police Department. At present, we have 16. The problem is detectives are one of the highest-paid members of a police department, and therefore, when it comes to budgetary concerns, raising the number of detectives becomes the most expensive way to increase a police department. But the reality is, as our community grows, but our numbers of detectives do not, what we end up seeing happen is that only the most serious crimes are having detectives investigate them. And we know we can stop a lot of crime earlier if we investigate all crimes.
Lisa Larson.
Anybody who's in the public service business knows that their number-one priority is the public health and safety of their community, and I believe strongly in that. I do feel safe in Lawrence, but I also understand that I'm also speaking of a voice, from a voice of privilege on that. I have had the opportunity to actually work with the police officers, as well as fire crews, on situations that have happened to me personally, and they've taken very good care of me, I have to admit. One thing I'm just really excited about is that the county has got initiative together for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, and that's something that they're working with on community partners as well as the city. And we are putting together studies to show what is the best policing methods that we can use, that we can incorporate with our police officers. And everybody's working together in a manner that I believe is just going to be better for, make our community better, as well as making our policing better.
Again, you're listening to the Voter Education Coalition and KLWN 2017 General Elections City Commission Candidate Forum on KLWN Lawrence, K269 GP Lawrence. This forum is also available on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, Midco Channel 25, and on the Voter Education Coalition's Facebook and website. New FM 101.7 and 1320 KLWN will be airing a replay of this forum several times over the next few weeks leading up to the general election. We would like to thank the City of Lawrence and their staff for the use of the city commission meeting room today, and all their help in making this event possible. Thus far, we've been asking questions submitted by the Voter Education Coalition partners, and now at this time, we will go to audience submitted questions. And the first one is, what is your commitment personally to the environment, and how do you plan to apply that in your role as city commissioner? What is your commitment personally to the environment, and how do you plan to apply that in your role as city commissioner? And we'll start around again in alphabetical order. Jennifer Ananda.
Thank you. My, I'm on the Community Mercantile Board of Directors. We are installing a solar panel on our roof right now. It's very exciting. It was one of the best things that I've approved as our, as our board president, and shortly after. So that is very exciting. We are also committed to shopping local. I drive an electric car, which is very exciting for me, certainly something I never thought I would have the privilege to own. Outside of that, I'm also committed to supporting policies that require our community to be committed to the environment as well, to the extent that we balance that with economic feasibility. I support the community using sustainable building methods and requiring developers who request incentives to do the same. I believe that we can be the leader in sustainability in our community, both visibly and invisibly. So doing things like retrofitting and any new buildings, obviously using LEED standards, but also visibly. So bringing in EV charging stations, looking at something like what KC P&L did, where I can go regularly to charge my car. Things like that are visible and set us apart from other communities.
Mike Anderson.
I do my best, just as everybody else does, Eric, when it comes to reuse, recycle. I'm also a big believer in the zero-waste philosophy. I do everything I can to adhere to that, most definitely. You look at that banner right out there, and it talks about sustainability, and the four-star rating that we have, I actually think the city commission the last couple of years has done a great job in moving forward with environmental concerns, with their definitions of sustainability. I know the last forum, Matthew talked about the lights that are, that we can't see, apparently, which I hope too one day, that are on the other side of that wall. When you look at what successful cities have, you find studies say that, well, they all have three things, and these three things are not mutually exclusive, and that is economic vitality, social cohesion, and sustainability. And those are three tenants that I take very seriously. And of course, is that if those are the variables that distinguish successful cities, I'll work very diligently towards accomplishing all of those. And as a city commissioner, it's your job to focus on those three very aspects, which, again, aren't mutually exclusive, but are very much related to each other.
Basam Shaheen.
Lawrence is gonna keep growing, and Lawrence is growing. And I want to make sure, I want to make it as environmentally safe as we can, and that's why I bring in a growth with balance, where I'll try to help bring in growth with balance. And just the other day, I was in a meeting in Chicago, it has nothing, had to do with plastic bags. And plastic bags in Lawrence, and I noticed when I went to Walgreens over there, I had to pay about five cents for a plastic bag, and I saw that was some kind of a plan that they did for keeping it clean and environmental. I know we're not there yet, but I am all about keeping Lawrence clean and safe.
Matthew Herbert.
There's two things I want to talk about, one I've done and one that I look forward to doing. First, the one I've done, as a member of this city commission, we've worked together with Energy 360 Auditors here in Lawrence to develop a $1.2 million plan to develop sustainable operations within our building. And here's the beauty of it, that $1.2 million is fully refundable if we do not see that amount of savings based upon the changes we make. So to the consumer, to the member of the public, it is a zero-cost program long-term. Secondly, what I want to do, I actually had the opportunity yesterday to have lunch with Charlie Sedlock and the crew out at HAMs, where we take all of our recycling currently. If you haven't had a chance to tour the MRF, the recycling facility, I encourage you to do that. It's a $4 million facility they built for the city out there, and right now, it's running at 25% capacity. Why is it only at 25% capacity? Because we've dragged our heels on getting commercial recycling started. But as a part of this commission, just last month, we put together a work session where we instructed our solid waste department. We expect to see a commercial recycling plan on the table by December of this year, and we will. We will have commercial recycling in this community.
Lisa Larson.
One thing I bring to the commission is a strong science background. I spent my career over 30 years as an environmental geologist, and that's what my business was, environmental consulting. I spent my entire career working on environmental cleanups and regulation, so I'm very committed to environmental sustainability. And what we've done in the city, or how we've applied that with the city, I believe, as Matthew indicated, is we've bringing in an entire reevaluation, as well as restructuring of how our buildings are lit, how energy-tight our buildings are, and we're going to continue with that. So I am very committed, and I believe that with my science background, that's how I'm going to apply it to projects, because I'll be able to look at it from a point of view. I don't think anybody else has that's on the commission right now, and I'm going to continue to do that.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
So I am, I'll just be upfront with it, I am Native American, and throughout my childhood, I was always taught this appreciation for the environment, for without it, we don't exist. We're taught to respect all aspects of the earth, of the water, everything that comes with it, the wildlife. And I feel, coupled with all the things that I've studied over my lifetime, within both societies, Native American and the normal American society, I can use that background with all that knowledge, my understanding of numbers. As Commissioner Herbert and Commissioner Larson were talking about, the way we can make our buildings more airtight, make the lighting, I, you know, they've already said it all. And I understand the impact and how to also talk with people and get that across to them from a more organic point of view. So that's what I will bring, and that's the background I have for it. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to our next audience submitted question for today's forum. All right, we'll go to our next audience submitted question for today's forum. Having been to several candidate forums where transient and homeless members of our community have been mentioned as being a burden on downtown businesses, or overflowing into our Prairie Park community, do you see this as an important issue, and what do you plan to do to address it? Having been to several candidate forums while transient and homeless members of our community have been mentioned as being a burden on downtown businesses, or overflowing into our Prairie Park community, do you see this as an important issue, and what do you plan to do to address it? And this time, we'll begin with Mike Anderson.
What I see as an important issue is in a bigger issue, in that if you look at our per capita median income in Douglas County, last time I checked, it was ranked 91 out of 105 counties in Kansas. And so, it's a bigger issue of, what are we doing to offer to provide people more opportunities for jobs, for living wage jobs, for people to make a living in Lawrence? And I think that's the issue I want to talk about. We talk about safety and health, well, it's an economic issue as well, most definitely, in my opinion. And that's why you see me such, and as a huge proponent of this idea, if businesses grow, if they expand, if we bring in more entrepreneurship, if we have more jobs, we have the Peaslee Tech Training Center, building, what, we have 400 students now, in five years, you watch, we're going to have 1,000. It's providing those opportunities for people to, you know, have opportunities where they can make a dollar, and they can stay in Lawrence, and they can have quality of life, which I want them to. So, my job as a city commissioner is to understand the economic ramifications of this, to do everything I can to help with visitations, surveys, BRE, entrepreneurship, working with the Peaslee Center, to have these opportunities available.
Basim Shaheen.
Again, I'm a downtown business owner, and I don't see having a homeless problem. I see that we're having a mental health crisis. And I believe that our shelter, our, the utilities that Lawrence has to help people who are actually homeless is there, and they can get help. The only thing that we don't have is we do not utilize the mental health, and the mental health courts. And in addition, I believe that we need to add a veterans court and a drug court. With that, we'll help our homeless issue downtown. But again, I'm a, I'm a downtown owner, and I can tell you every single one of these homeless downtown, and what their issue that they're having, because it is a mental health crisis. It's not the fact that they don't want money, they don't want money. It's that they say they want a sandwich, and I bring them a sandwich, and then they throw in the trash. So, there's a mental health crisis, I feel for them, they're humans, they need to be helped, and they need to be helped as soon as possible.
Matthew Herbert.
I think the question becomes, what can the city commission do to address this? And the first thing that we can do is, we can look at long-term solutions, and one of the long-term solutions we've developed over the past year is out at the Lawrence Community Shelter, where we've gone from operating the shelter on a, here's where you stay for the night, here's a sandwich and a coffee, leave in the morning, to now, we have programming established there, where everybody who checks into the Lawrence Community Shelter is, has the availability of counseling services, has the availability to work with an individual one-on-one, on resume building, has the ability. We actually have a specific wing of the shelter now, specific to families, that's enabled these families to be put into housing over the last year, at a rate we've never seen before in this community. Secondarily, we need to look, as Basim just addressed, at the, at the way we're dealing with mental health. As I said, you have a city commission right now, for the first time in a decade, that's restored funding to the RAP program, and enabled mental health to be achieved at the age it needs to be achieved, to the youngest members of our society. It does us no good as a community if we're only addressing mental health when somebody's 45, 50, 55 years old. We have to address it much earlier than that. And finally, I'll, I'll end with that for time.
Lisa Larson.
I agree strongly, that I believe it's more of a mental health issue to start with. That's a very basic, fundamental need that we have in this community, that isn't being addressed at the level of the homeless and the transient. And I believe we are taking steps, as a, as a city commission, as well as a city, as well as a county, to start to shore up that, to start to fill in the areas where we are not doing a good job. And I go back to the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, where we are beefing up our mental health aspect with the, with the, with the city, funding of our health, mental health crises. We've got police positions now for mental health, but we have got to address it from a mental health standpoint. I believe jobs were going to be great, but if we can't get these folks some mental health, as well as affordable housing, it's a cycle. If we can treat their mental health, but they don't have a place to live, they're going to be right back to where they were on the mental health issue. So, it's gotta, it's gotta be a full spectrum, from mental health, to affordable housing, to treatment.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
I agree with every statement that's been made about mental health being need to be addressed. As someone who has dealt, over life, my lifetime, with PTSD, and anxiety and depression linked with that, I recognize that for myself, coping skills within everyday society are what allowed me to function, allowed me to get out and knock thousands of doors across the city, allowed me to sit up here and talk to you, and actually know what I'm talking about. It takes years, and I want us all to be cognizant of that. And when we talk about this funding, to help people, the more people are recognized, it's going to take many years to address their issues and to help them. I'm not saying let us not do that. What I'm saying is, when we discuss the cost of this, understand it is going to be large, and it is going to be long-term, and we need to be compassionate and empathetic with these people, because over the long-term, they will contribute to their, this society. I am an example of that. I've given a lot back, and just think of what we could do to help so many other people.
Jennifer Ananda.
So, I, I think that it's important to acknowledge that we can't legislate away a problem or an issue, and we have to underdress, or address the underlying issues head-on, and it's complicated. We have to address poverty, which is really the root of a lot of this, but also trauma. And so, we spend a lot of time talking about mental health issues, but we also have to acknowledge that there are individuals who are perpetrating trauma onto other people, and we need to address that problem as well, or there are just going to be more people experiencing this. So, it's not always just a mental health issue. That is often a symptom, as well, of a larger problem. Addiction and self-medication, as well as mental health issues and criminal issues, can all lead to homelessness. I've toured the shelter, I've seen the area for the families, I think it's a wonderful starting point for families, but is this nowhere that any family aspires to remain? I understand the issues, I think that we need to further our understanding of that, identify gaps, work with the county, work well with the county, expand and support our services, work with the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, who is doing terrific work, and work to stop the violence up front. If we make this investment now, we're going to pay less in the end, if we want to make it an economic conversation.
Our next audience submitted question. How do you define community policing? Do you believe our police will have the time to do it, given the budget? How do you define community policing? Do you believe our police will have the time to do it, given the budget? And this time, we begin with Basim Shaheen.
Like I said earlier, for having a business downtown that's open really late, having a police available from a specific time, from 12 a.m. to 3 a.m., Thursday, Friday, Saturday, because that is when it's the busiest downtown, I think that will help with the budget. I don't think it's something that needs to be done every single day, otherwise, it will cost us a lot of money. But I believe it can be done, it's not that expensive, takes about maybe five, five-foot police, and I, I think it's easily can be done. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
To me, you define community policing by looking at what the police actually do. And if, as a community, the sole role of your police department is, is to arrest individuals who have broken a crime, you are by very nature not community policing. What we need to make sure we're doing is engaging our police with the community on the front end. We should have kids that are, that are raised in a society where they don't just see police officers on the worst day of their life. And that's easier to say than to do, frankly, because of budgetary constraints. And so, the reality is, the one thing we have to do, and Commissioner Larson talked about this, that as a commission, we've gone to priority-based budgeting, where we look specifically at the role of a city commission as public safety and infrastructure. Does our budget reflect that? And as we talk about a budget for, for our police department, we need to make sure that we're including not just enough money in there, so that our police can engage with people at the point of arrest, but that we can be on the front end as well. I have the opportunity at Lawrence High to work across the hallway from our school resource officer, and I see every single day how our school resource officer engages with kids, not to arrest them, not to shake them down, but to shake their hand, and to engage with them on a personal level. We have an entire generation of kids growing up, seeing police not on their worst day, but seeing them every day.
Lisa Larson.
I don't think it's a question of should we do this, it's a must, that we have to do community policing. And I believe with our new police chief that's come on board in the last few weeks, that as a, as a city commission, we've got to dictate what that priority is, and I believe community policing is a priority for this commission. We've, we've said that in our budget, and we're going to continue to say that going forward, that we're going to provide the funding that's, that's needed to ensure that our police department can make a priority of community policing.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
Our community, our police are currently engaged in a lot of community policing activities. Many, by now, I believe, most of our law enforcement officials, and by the end of this year, it will be, all of our law enforcement will have received crisis intervention training, which means they do de-escalation techniques. This is primarily what they focus on, because they are trying not to arrest people. This goes back to what Commissioner Herbert was saying. They want to meet you, they want to de-escalate, and allow you to go on with your day, not turn this into your worst day. And another part of community policing, we love to use that phrase, but let's remember that phrase starts with the word "community," so we all have to buy in. We have to get out and talk to each other, and let each other know about the good work the community, the police are doing in our community, and the way they are employing de-escalation techniques. And that way, everyone is aware of it, the police get a little more leeway, not to do anything wrong, but they get more slack, more interactions, as Commissioner Herbert was talking about, that are positive throughout the week, throughout their lives.
Jennifer Ananda.
So, for me, I define community policing as exactly what my understanding is the task of law enforcement, which is to protect and to serve. I think that we, we, we are in control of the budget that allows that to happen, so that is within our power to make happen. I believe that that looks like de-escalation. I believe that it, it also includes showing that they care about the community, and giving them the leeway, time, and money, and person power to do that. I believe that it looks like prevention, working with individuals in the community, particularly individuals who have had multiple run-ins with law enforcement in our criminal justice system. I believe it also looks like giving our law enforcement the leeway to participate in collaboration and systems work, where they work with other agencies in order to broaden the services that they're able to offer. I understand that's complicated, and difficult, and expensive, so I don't pretend like that solution is easy to come by or immediately, but I think it's certainly something that we should all strive toward.
Mike Anderson.
To serve and protect, and ensure public safety through preventative and reactionary measures. And I think working with the community, the Lawrence Police Department has done a fantastic job. It's funny, when I toured it, I got to see the bin of the blue hats they have for their Blue Santa Hat program, when they go out and engage with the community. They have a lot of programs like that, a lot of events like that. They're doing a fantastic job in that regard. You look at even their Twitter feed, and they're using that to engage with the public, telling the public, hey, here's a, here's a good idea of a Halloween prank, and here's a bad idea of a Halloween prank. So, they're doing a fantastic job, I think, to engage with the community. And certainly, when you're on a city commission, you understand, what are your core services? And certainly, the police is one of them. And are they funded appropriately? And they're doing a fantastic job now, and I want to do everything I can, as a city commissioner, to ensure that they have everything they need to function at the most highest of level, to have better recruiting techniques, to help with recruiting, and to continue to make Lawrence a safe environment for all.
Our next audience submitted question. Have you met with the new Lawrence Chief of Police? If so, what did you discuss? If not, what do you hope to discuss with him? I'll read it a second time. Have you met with the new Lawrence Chief of Police? If so, what did you discuss? If not, what do you hope to discuss with him? I believe we're on Matthew Herbert.
I've met with him several times, and we've discussed a wide range of topics that, unfortunately, the very first time we met was in discussion, and, dealing with our triple homicide downtown. That was approximately 24 hours after he moved into the community, so I shook his hand, said, "Welcome to Lawrence," and said, you know, "Time to get to work, we got to figure this out." The second time I met with him was in line with him at Beamer's Barbecue, and we discussed the best barbecue purchase one could make. And the third time I, I met with him was when we discussed our detective issue, and I, I addressed him, asking, you know, are we facing a shortage of, of police personnel in this community? And he gave me a, "Well, hold on a minute" sort of answer, and that's when we began our discussion about the, the problem we face with detectives, and how we have a real shortage of detectives. And I want to continue on that answer, I ran out of time. One of the things we're seeing happening because of the shortage of detectives, is we're seeing that a lot of, of, you know, in, in his, in his words, any case that doesn't involve, you know, a stabbing or a shooting, is having to take a backseat when these events occur. And the reality is, so many of our crimes in this community are committed by individuals that are not committing a crime for the first time. And so, being able to have those detectives as, and, and, on the front end, may prevent those later, greater crimes.
Lisa Larson.
You know, I have met with the new police chief a few times. I was at the McDonald's event this past week, when they were doing the meet and greet there with all the officers, and I've also met him at a neighborhood picnic, and then I met with him when he was sworn in. And what I've talked with him about briefly, very briefly, is just what his priorities are going to be, and how his experience in Louisville, Kentucky, is going to, what's it going to, how he can bring that to Lawrence, using best policing practices. And, you know, I want to continue those conversations with him, and find out from him, basically, you know, where he thinks we should go, as, as far as priorities go, and what we can do in Lawrence to continue to curb some of the crime that we see, and become more of a, a community policing-type city.
Dustin Stumbling Bear.
The new chief and I have crossed paths a couple times. The first time, we just introduced ourselves to one another, and the second time, we got to actually stand and chat for a few moments. We discussed the downtown shooting. I didn't push for any details, as I believe operational security, that I didn't have right to have that information. But he did let me know that they were working hard on it, and they were hoping to give us good news, which, just this week, we got all that good news coming in about them capturing the perpetrators of this crime. So, and we talked a bit about personal things, we shared information about our families, and talked a bit about that. So, that's as far as it's gone at the moment. I look forward to having more serious conversations with him when I am elected. Thank you.
Jennifer Ananda.
I met with him briefly after the last city commission meeting, but we just said hello. I think that the smartest thing I've learned is to walk into a room like you're the least intelligent person there, and so, I have a lot to learn from this chief. And I'm interested in listening to his experience, and hearing what he has to say about what he sees as his vision for Lawrence. Now that he's had a few weeks, and granted, that is not enough time to get a full lay of any land, I, I do believe that he brings a lot to the table. And even if you're not the smartest, or the, the least intelligent person in the room when you walk in, if you come in with that attitude, you're going to learn something, one way or the other. That's what I want to do, I want to learn. I also, eventually, after hearing his ideas, I would love to share some ideas and thoughts, particularly on the issues around criminal justice reform, and my experience around that, as well as equity issues, and how those are going to be addressed, because I know that they're a concern within our community.
Mike Anderson.
This is going to sound weird, but I've actually been in his office without him being there. But I went on a tour this Wednesday with interim chief Anthony, and I promised someone would let me in, but I didn't get a chance to see him that time. We were scheduled to meet, but I think something took him away, where he didn't get a chance to, I didn't get a chance to talk to him one-on-one. And that's what I wanted, is that, that time together, where I could ask him questions. And one of the big questions I like to ask anybody is, what are we not doing now that you think we should be doing? And I really would look forward to his answer on that. Practices, policies, are we doing? Does he have everything he needs to succeed? And if not, what is that? I also want to get his gauge on mental health, which I think should be a core service here in Lawrence, Kansas. Are we doing enough? What does he see as our, the current environment for mental health in Lawrence, Kansas, and how can we improve that area as well? So, I look forward to having a long conversation tonight. I'm doing a ride-along tonight, and hopefully, I'll get a chance to talk to him a little bit. I don't know if he'll be there at all, but in any case, being on the city commission, that's a relationship that has to be fairly close.
Basim Shaheen.
Mine was very quick. I, I met the chief at Carnegie Hall when he was just a candidate, and over there, we were told to ask questions and go talk to candidates, and when I went to him, my only question was to him, was, "Will I feel safe as an Arab American, as an Arab American in Lawrence?" And with a nice smile, and a pat on the back, he said, "Yes," and then, that's all I got. So, yeah.
Again, you're listening to KLWN Lawrence, K269 GP Lawrence. This is the Voter Education Coalition and KLWN 2017 General Election City Commission Candidate Forum. The Voter Education Coalition is a nonpartisan organization that sponsors candidate forums, meet and greets, and other events to educate citizens about candidates and their policies. You can learn more at votereducationcoalition.org. We're in the audience submitted question portion of this forum, and we can have some[1764.96] We're in the audience submitted question portion of this forum and we can have some more that we can give to the candidates at this time. The next question. Tell us your interest in city ordinance pertaining to plastic bag waste production. Tell us your interest in city ordinance pertaining to plastic bag waste production. Waste reduction, excuse me, waste reduction. And we'll begin with Lisa Larson.
Yeah, yeah. The plastic bag, I don't, we don't have an ordinance for plastic bags, but if, if we were to start discussing that, obviously, I would be very interested in hearing what the community has to say about it. My personal preference is I'm not a big fan of plastic bags. I know there's been cities out there that have developed ordinances to, to get rid of plastic bags and I would be, definitely be interested in entertaining that after a long public conversation about it.
Dustin Stumbling, Mayor.
I haven't even heard or thought of this prior to this question coming up, so I would like to just, yeah, it was what Lisa said, or sorry, Commissioner Larson said, to take time to talk to the public and hear what they have to say regarding this ordinance. I know lower-income people use these bags for trash cans because they can't afford to buy an additional set of trash bags and other purposes, so it's, we do need to see about what we can do with that in the community and helping people before we make a move on this ordinance.
Jennifer Ananda.
So I've had the opportunity to hear some of this conversation previously through working at the Community Mercantile when we did get rid of plastic bags. And we have successfully done that. And I, I don't believe that that is a point of contention at this point for our customers. However, it was a process. Any kind of change requires conversation, transparency and accountability. And so we have to look into alternatives. You know, I did grow up in the house that used those bags for a trash can, so I get it. And, and I think that there are a lot of uses for them. However, I also think that there are a lot of giant stacks of plastic bags that are never going to be used. And I, as a knitter, I turned some of them into yarn and it's a really long process and it's not fun like I thought it might be. So I don't recommend, you know, some of the reusability of things that we propose or that others have proposed. It can get onerous. And so how do we eliminate the waste that, that occurs as a result of that, I think is a good question to ask.
Mike Anderson.
I'm extremely interested in that ordinance, absolutely. I've heard some of the arguments for it, I've yet to hear a solid argument on why you should keep the plastic bags. I'm certainly open to hearing those arguments. But I know that I use my reusable bags, the one I have from the Lawrence Public Library. I use it all the time, every time I go to, I shouldn't say Dylan's or Hy-Vee, I might anger one of them, but in any case, I use them all the time, most definitely. And is there a floating, there's a floating pile of plastic bags out in the Pacific Ocean the size of California, I believe, to that, at that extent? So certainly, I'm very open to that idea. Have I heard all the arguments for and against? I have not. But from what I've seen in the other cities that I've used them, they have successes coming from these ordinances. And I look forward to seeing if this is something that Lawrence could do as well.
Basam Shaheen.
As the city grows, I do believe that it's a great idea and I'll be all for it. Like I said, I went to Chicago, they had that same thing and they, and when I was there, they were showing the before and after of different areas. And it's night and day. So basically, they showed a picture of like by the beach, how it was like full of plastic. And then that same area went after the ordinance and it was literally night and day and how clean it was. And as the city grows, this will be an important issue for the future, so, yes.
Matthew Herbert.
Well, the city does not currently have an ordinance addressing plastic bags. Some work has actually already begun. Full disclosure, a dear friend of mine, Emma, was actually kind of spearheading this and, and working to get it put together and brought, brought a task force together to address the issue and worked with Eileen Horn, who at the time was our sustainability coordinator, to make this proposal and actual ordinance. And unfortunately for the city of Lawrence, very fortunate for Eileen, when Representative John Wilson resigned, she took his seat in the State House and so we lost our sustainability coordinator. And at that point, I think a lot of the progress on that plastic bag ordinance also slowed down. So I look forward to working with our new sustainability coordinator as soon as that individual is hired and picking this up where, where it was kind of dropped off and, and continuing to work with it. Certainly, there's going to be a public conversation that occurs. Certainly, there's going to be arguments made on both sides. But I'm definitely familiar with the concept of it and I've definitely been involved with it just from having personal friends kind of spearhead the effort.
Our next audience submitted question for the candidates. Should Lawrence be a sanctuary city? Why or why not? Should Lawrence be a sanctuary city? Why or why not? And this time we begin with Dustin Stumbling, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm fine with it because I've actually lived along the border. I've lived down in Arizona, I've seen the Border Patrol agents and some of them take it a bit far, even with American citizens. And to have to continue to use that level of authority beyond the border into our cities, we don't have that obligation with ICE, we don't have that obligation there, so, yeah. I have zero problem with us being a sanctuary city for the good of people because they also contribute to our society. They are working jobs here, they are living here, they are paying, these individuals are paying into our tax base. So that's where I come from on this particular subject.
Jennifer Ananda.
So I had the opportunity to work a little bit with a task force that was asked to look into this when the sanctuary city piece came up originally because I practiced immigration law. And in my immigration law, I did a lot of deferred action for childhood arrivals. I did marriage visas. I also did VAWA, so Violence Against Women Act, visas, U-visas. And all of these are a myriad of individuals who are documented and undocumented. I know that there is a population in our community that is not documented. However, what we heard was, "It's not broken, stop trying to fix it," from that community. And so I want to hear what that community wants from us and I think that that's what we need to provide. If that is being a sanctuary city, then absolutely, I wholly support that because I know many of those kids who are doing excellent work in this community, who are attending school in this community and who are doing the best that they can in the situations that they're in to contribute to this community. So I fully support it if that is what the community wants and not what politically looks good for us.
Mike Anderson.
Sure, Eric, speaking of community wants and needs, and I'm open to the idea, but I'm by no means ready to say right now whether I'm for it or against it at the moment. I just haven't heard enough arguments for both sides of it, so to speak, quite yet. This is the sort of thing, I just can't, me, Mike Anderson, make it. I want to talk to my fellow city commissioners, talk to the city managers, the city staff, other cities who have this distinction. And this is a major decision, I consider it to be an important decision and I would go to it not willy-nilly, but well-informed and I just don't have all the information at the point to, to give you an idea in this regard yet.
Basam Shaheen.
If I had $60 or $80 million a year to donate to Lawrence, then I would be for the sanctuary city. But the fact that I don't have that and I don't want to risk the lives of our students and our hospitals and our schools because that's who will be cutting our state funding if we do become a sanctuary city. So again, if I did have the amount of money to donate every year, which I love the idea, but we just can't and it's non-doable, then yes, I do.
Matthew Herbert.
One of the first things I learned as a city commissioner was who the smartest person in the room was every Tuesday night. And it wasn't anybody on the city commission and it wasn't the city manager, any of the three that I've been a part of. The smartest person in the room sits immediately to your left every Tuesday night and her name is Toni Wheeler. She's the city's attorney. So when the issue of sanctuary city came up, the first person I talked to was the smartest person in the room. And what Toni Wheeler will tell you is that currently, the Lawrence Police Department operates in practice as a sanctuary city, just without the name designation. And so you say, "Well, if we're already operating in practice, put the name on it, let's be proud of who we are." Well, to Basam's response, he's absolutely correct. When you put the name on it, you run the risk of, you know, the Brownback administration, the Trump administration, you have a lot of people in elected office right now that target cities that put the name on it. And what I would tell you, the most fiscally prudent and yet at the same time socially aware decision you could make right now in the city of Lawrence is to operate in practice as a sanctuary city, as we currently do. But do not apply the name and run the risk of facing those huge punitive fines from the state or federal level.
Lisa Larson.
That's exactly what we're doing. We've had long discussions with Toni and I believe we even did a proclamation to that fact of, of some sort indicating that we are protective of our citizens. Our police department does not actively pursue looking for illegal citizens. And when they're stopped, that's not part of the conversation unless there's a felony committed. So we're going to continue to operate that way. And yes, there's funding issues that have to be considered. You can't just operate in a vacuum. You have to look at the whole picture and that's what we're doing in the city of Lawrence and I'm going to continue to, to work to, to do that.
Good on time, yep. Next audience submitted question. Do you believe that the city has a clear vision on affordable housing? If so, what is it? If not, what should it be? Do you believe that the city has a clear vision on affordable housing? If so, what is it? If not, what should it be? And for this question, we'll begin with Jennifer Ananda.
So I don't, this is a muddy issue. I believe that we have a definition of affordable housing that we use when making affordable housing decisions. I am delighted that this study will be commissioned to address affordable housing in our community and I am thankful that our commission voted to have that happen. I think that we have wonderful organizations doing work regarding affordable housing in our community and I am so thankful for everything that they do because they do a lot. But there are gaps and we have to address those gaps. And that is my biggest concern and that is when I'm hopeful that our housing study will identify and help us to address so that we can provide effective and broad coverage and understanding and assistance with affordable housing in our community.
Mike Anderson.
No, we don't, Derek. And that's why I think this $80,000 that we're spending on this housing study is so money well-spent. I think we don't know the answer yet and we still need to figure out that answer. And there's not a mayor in all of the United States that doesn't have a problem with affordable housing. Absolutely, this is something that is across the nation and we have to deal with it as well. And I don't know the answer yet. I look forward to, is it permanent supportive housing with the county, what they want to do with it, which could work great? Unlocking land and working out? Is it reducing construction costs? Is it reducing parking requirements? I will say this, though, I think the requirements for affordable housing need to be reduced. I think if we're as serious about affordable housing, these idea of a tree that has to be every 60 feet, sidewalks have to be exactly this wide, we have to have all these parking requirements. I look at all of these and I talk to the Lawrence Home Builders Association. The code book happens every three years and we're the guinea pigs. We get it first and we have to work for it first. And people who develop have to know these codes throughout, in and out. And if we're serious about affordable housing, we need to understand, how can we make this process smoother and easier for the people who are creating it?
Basam Shaheen.
I'm going to be truthful. I, from hearing so many different types of ideas about affordable housing, I don't even know. And I'm very glad that we're going to have a commission, that the study is going to be commissioned because I want to get a concrete answer and I bet everybody else does. It's, I don't like the fact that, you know, for example, developers, like we need to take and give when it comes to affordable housing. They need to know what they need to do as well. I believe scatter, scatter plotting is a great way to do it as well. But again, the fact that it's commissioned and there's going to be a study about it and that will know more. And I've been hearing about this for over 10 years and the fact that it's not even, the fact that we are just now putting, putting a study on it is unreal. So I kind of want to see what the answer is to this as well.
Matthew Herbert.
You know, I think we have a vision of where we want to go, yes. But no, I don't think we have a clear plan of action right now to address our real needs within this community. And I'll be honest with you, I felt a whole lot stronger about it six months ago. But, but recently, we've made some choices that have me questioning the direction we're moving with affordable housing. I, for one, won't sit here and tell you that I think 590 square foot, $95,000 condos represent affordable housing. But this year, we've made a decision that, that says apparently that is. And so, so long as that's on the table in front of us, I have to seriously question if we actually know what affordable housing is. One of the problems that we've run into is we're using the federal HUD guidelines to define, to define what affordable housing is. And these federal HUD guidelines make use of, of, you know, household median income as opposed to family median income. And, and we're running into variable issues here. And, and as a result, we say, "Well, anything, you know, our median income is $70,000, so anything that, that someone making less than that could afford is thereby by definition affordable housing." And I think the reality is we need to be addressing affordable housing for, for those in our community with the greatest need and those are not going to be people buying $95,000 condos.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, I think we do have a, I know we have a vision. In fact, I've been attending the Affordable Housing Advisory Board meetings for the past year, year and a half, every single month, pretty much. So, and I've listened to the conversations that's occurring on the, by the board members and I've been very impressed by what they're, what the difficulties that they've had and they've overcome. And our, the vision for affordable housing, we've got a large group of nonprofit organizations in Lawrence that is working, that I believe is, is, is living that vision. They, they have put together programs and plans on providing affordable housing for citizens. The problem is, is the volume's just not there. We don't have the ability to have the volume and that's what we need. So yes, there's a vision there. Can it be better defined? Absolutely, and that's what we're going to be doing with the Affordable Housing Study. And one thing you have to remember is that there are, there's a range of affordable housing that is needed out there. Everything from 0% to 70%, 80% of a median, average median income. So when we talk about providing affordable housing for somebody in the 70% to 80% percentile, we're not, we're talking about something totally different for those who are only making 10% to 20% of that average median income. So we got to remember, it's a broad spectrum of need there in that we can't focus on just one area. And that's what we are doing at the, at the nonprofit organization level.
Dustin Stumbling, Mayor.
So I'm just going to piggyback on what Lisa was saying because she was, what she said was perfect and spot on and that expand, how broad we have to be, it's not just single-family, single-person units we need to be looking at. We need to be looking at family units for these different people who are at these, all these income levels. So we're going to have starters for young professionals, we're going to have those for young families, we're going to have them for large families, people up to eight to 10 kids. They also need assistance. So we're going to have to look at what we can provide across the spectrum for these people. And that's where we need that larger pot of money to be able to have dedicated, to bring in those HUD funds, which goes back to what Commissioner Herbert was saying and that when we use the 80% median income and our particular community and the many income levels that we have, that rises that level to a very high level, to a very high number, that a lot of people, puts them at a big disadvantage and we're not addressing that. Again, back to what Commissioner Larson was saying.
Our next question submitted by the audience. In your opinion, what value do the arts bring to the city? And would you support city funding for the arts? In your opinion, what value do the arts bring to the city? And would you support city funding for the arts? This time, we'll begin with Mike Anderson.
You see, my eyes are getting really big here, Eric. I'm glad I get to start with this question. 100,000% yes. The arts and culture, again, are such a vital part of the identity of Lawrence. And let's also think of it too, is that you, in any community, you need that, these ideas, these community or social anchors where people, places where people can go to, to gather, to build social cohesion when, when times are tough for them, when times are tough for the city, that they can go and interact. The Lawrence Arts Center is a great example of one of those societal anchors. The Lawrence Public Library is a societal anchor. We need more of these in place. That's why I was such a big proponent of Lawrence Art Street Corridor project. I don't think people realize that the art community in this town with film, art, musicians, painters, sculptors, they could live anywhere they want and they live here. We are so blessed to have people like Stan Heard, Kevin Wilmot, who choose to call Lawrence home nationally, internationally renowned artists that want to live here because they see the vibrancy that the arts community can get. And also, keep in mind, the arts and entertainment is the third largest industry sector in Lawrence as well. So it's helping us culturally, it's helping us monetarily as well.
Basam Shaheen.
Yes, I will continue to, I, I'm trying to speak as enthusiastic, that was, that was, that was too good. So I'm going to, so yes, I do support it. I believe that art is a pillar of bringing in businesses as well and primary businesses. And it's just a must in a city for its beauty as well. So I believe that, yes, I will continue to fund it and grow. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
Yes, absolutely. And there are several ways in which the city government is currently funding art, not only through, you know, the ownership of our art, art center, but also through transient guest tax. And this brings us to a previous, previous question about an hour ago. And that was the sales tax versus property tax balance within our budget. One of the reasons why we've gone very heavy in the, in the way of sales taxes is because we have such a thriving tourist industry in this community brought out by arts and culture. Through transient guest tax, every time someone stays in a, in a hotel in Lawrence, Kansas, 6% of their stay goes into a fund. And I have the honor of being the city commission representative on the transient guest tax board. And so I've witnessed firsthand how that money gets spent. That money gets spent in marketing, things like art in the park. That money gets spent in marketing, things like the Free State Film Festival. That money gets spent in, in marketing events like the Van, Van, Van Gogh will put on or the Art to Go Parade or all of these events that the community puts on that draw people into the community who then spend their money in our community, who then help us pay our city bills without coming to you for your property tax. Art is as crucial, not only for culture, as it is to the Art is as crucial, not only for culture, as it is to the economy directly.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, I would just mirror on that. We, arts require, arts provide such an economic development tool for us, as well as makes our city more livable. And that second one, I think, is as important as, if not more than, than the economic part. Both of them are important. But as a city, we fund arts right now, and I'm going to continue in that mode, and we need to ensure that, you know, we continue with Explore Lawrence, we fund them, which they fund many, many concerts and programs from, through the transient guest tax, and I think we need to continue on that mode. Thank you.
Dustin Stumble Bear.
It's been said before, it can't really change it. The transient guest tax is helping us through Explore Lawrence, through funding Explore Lawrence, so we've got to keep that up. They've brought us, some of the other items that they brought us that weren't mentioned, again, were the North American, or the African-American Quilt Convention, and that brought people from all around the country to our city. Again, going back to, it was sales tax dollars from out of town. So Explore Lawrence is great, we can continue to do that, to help fund them. And again, I would incur, I would actually mirror what Commissioner Herbert and Larson have said, and I would continue that funding of the arts within our city that at our current levels, because the economic development, or economic gain to the city far outweighs what we actually pay in for it.
Jennifer Ananda.
So I don't talk about it a lot, but I was a film and English creative nonfiction major, and while I got third place in the Wild West Film Festival Scare Factor competition, I did not make a living in the arts, which is, I'm here, and I'm delighted to be here. But that is part of my history. I understand how important the arts are in every aspect of our lives. They bring visitors to our community, which brings in sales tax money and other economic revenues to our city. They also are, the arts are how we create cultural change in a lot of ways, and I am proud of that heritage in Lawrence. I, I think that it's also what makes Lawrence unique. We're not just another suburb, we're not just another small town between Kansas City and Topeka. We are Lawrence. And if anybody knows about Kansas, they know about us, and that's part of the reason for it. So I absolutely support the arts in Lawrence.
Again, you're listening to the Voter Education Coalition in KLWN 2017, General Election City Commission Candidate Forum. The Voter Education Coalition is a nonpartisan organization that sponsors candidate forums, meet and greets, and other events to educate citizens about candidates and their policies. You can learn more about VEC events by visiting votereducationcoalition.org. This forum is available on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, Midco Channel 25, and on the Voter Education Coalition's Facebook and website. Also live, new FM 101.7 and 1320 KLWN will be airing replays of this forum several times over the next few weeks, leading up to Election Day, November 7. Onto our next submitted question. Do you favor a centralized transit hub or multiple mini hubs throughout the city? Please explain. Do you favor a centralized transit hub or multiple mini hubs throughout the city? Please explain. And this time, we are set to begin with Basim Shaheen.
I favor a more than one, probably one in the north, south, east and west. The reason why, this is how it'll be faster for people to reach their destinations, and most importantly, but yeah, so not, not just one hub, multiple hubs, multiple smaller hubs in different locations in Lawrence. I believe that as well is going to make it easier for people to go from one place to another, and it'll be faster. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
This is one of those issues where sometimes, as a city commissioner, you have to put your own ego on the shelf, step back and actually listen to what the professionals who do this for a living have to say. I've never designed bus routes in my entire life. I will likely never design bus routes. But those who do design bus routes professionally tell us that if we have any hope of actually getting Lawrence to a point where every stop or every route is 30 minutes or less, we have to have a centralized hub. And I'll tell you right now, a key component to keeping the Lawrence Transit a thriving transit system, and it is, it wins awards annually, is to make sure that we can get those route times down. Right now, we have a transit that carries a stigma with it. And it carries that stigma because with hour-long routes, anyone who has any other option is choosing to take another option. If you look at cities where transit has been very successful, that stigma is gone because everybody rides it, because it's just as convenient, or perhaps slightly less, but, but not significantly less convenient than driving your own car. Getting rid of that stigma is goal number one, and to do that, we have to get route times down as small as possible. And to do that, what the professional experts tell me is we need a centralized hub.
Lisa Larson.
We're in the process right now of doing a transit hub study to determine the best way to incorporate that into Lawrence. And it is true, all the experts that we've been hearing from, on the city commission has been indicating, we've got to get those times down if it's going to be successful. And one of the ways to do that is through a central hub. So I am looking forward to hearing that, that study. I believe it's going to be done in December, and I'm going to defer to what the experts tell me is the best for Lawrence, and also talk to the citizens as we get that data in.
Dustin Stumble Bear.
I agree with the commissioners. We do need to rely on the professionals. And again, I've been in the commission meetings, but they've talked about these items before, and it's about having a centralized hub will be the best for our city. And it will help people from the east and the west, and the north and south be able to get to and from these locations more quickly. And that's just all I, I can't really add to that.
Jennifer Ananda.
So I will repeat what we've been hearing, which is, I am not an expert in transportation. At the Lawrence Board of Realtors Forum, we were asked to say one thing that maybe they wouldn't want to hear, and it's, it was that I'm, I'm not a developer, I'm not an expert in those issues. However, I'm willing to learn, and I'm willing to listen, and I think that's the most important thing that you can walk into the room with, and then to make a good decision with that information. However, I do think it's time to make a decision regarding this, so we can no longer commission more studies or take more time to look at this. We have to consult with our experts, see what we have, and make a decision. Now, obviously, there are things outside of our control that, that may prohibit that from happening immediately. However, we, we have put this issue on the table, and off the table, and then back on the table, and then off the table, multiple times, and it's time, it's time to make a decision.
Mike Anderson.
Go ahead. I don't have enough information at the moment. I don't even know the centralized hub would be located, or the multiple hubs would be located. So I couldn't make a decision based on just vague knowledge. But I will say that it is paramount, the emphasis that we put in mass transit, because the top two things people spend their money on is, one, housing, and, two, their car. If we can help people not even, A, have a car or use a car less, we're going to be helping people monetarily 20 times over, my goodness. This idea that, we talk about affordable housing so much, and mass transit works for that as well. If people don't have to have a car payment, they don't have to pay for gas. If our transportation is so well that they're spending 30 minutes or less on a bus, they can get to work, they can get their groceries on it, and they can alleviate that financial burden of having a car or using their car, that's a win for everybody. Plus, it encourages, we'll see more bicycles, walkability amongst, running amok, as you'd want to see. So I'm thoroughly enjoying the direction we're moving in here with the mass transportation, getting rid of the stigma as a negative thing, using it as a positive, and seeing these times cut down certainly drastically.
Next question. At what level should the city support the community shelter? Do you support increasing or decreasing the current level of funding? At what level should the city support the community shelter? Do you support increasing or decreasing the current level of funding? And this time, we begin with Matthew Herbert.
I think one of the things we need to do is, is look specifically at, at program spending. Instead of sending a lump sum to the shelter and saying, here is X number of dollars, spend it. What we need to look at are the specific programs that the shelter has implemented that are working, that are working to a great degree, and we need to make sure that those are receiving the funding that they need. When we just send a block of cash to an organization, however, we're not truly being accountable to our taxpaying citizens. And then ultimately, what we see is an example of this two years ago, when the shelter came before us for emergency funding, and there were some questions about how the prior money had been used. There were some questions about, you know, financials, and ultimately Commissioner Bowley, Vice Mayor Bowley, was placed on the shelter board in kind of an auditing function. And one of the things we gleaned from that was programmatic spending. Let's look at things that are specifically working, and let's ensure that those are receiving the kind of funding that they need, but that the money is being specifically targeted. One area you're going to see that happen, if you've had a chance to tour the shelter, about half of the shelter's square footage right now is being used for a little more than storage. They do have a plan. You talked to Director Trey Meyer out there. They have a plan to make better use of that. It's going to be a specific program. That's the kind of thing I like to see.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, I definitely think, think that our, our spending's going to be best done through a program, working on the programs. And what, what we are seeing, for those who don't know this, the city, as well as the county, went together a couple of years ago, and both, both gave $100,000 for programs to get families out of the community shelter. So I think the key is getting the population down, and the way to do that is to make sure that we have the programs, the safety, the social net, the safety network with our partners, as well as in the community shelter, to work to get citizens out of the community shelter. And so the programs are what are going to be able to do that. It's not just beefing up the, the funding for the shelter itself, but also making sure our programs are supported to get people out of, out of the community shelter.
Dustin Stumble Bear.
So I, like many of those up here, have toured the Lawrence Community Shelter, and I agree with the two commissioner's statements regarding funding the program specifically. Having talked with Trey Meyer, as Commissioner Herbert was saying, he's talked about the different programs, and that's where they run into issues of helping people long-term. They don't have the funding for the programs consistently, so then staff shift, the one year they have it, maybe the next year they don't, and then another year they have the, the staff that can help with these different issues, access to services throughout the city. So that's why we need to focus on the programs, as the commissioner said, to help these individuals over the long term. Again, that's where our dollars will be best spent, is the long-term assistance we can give to those in need throughout our community, addressing our affordable housing, because that's where a lot of them also hurt. They can get the services, they can get the job at the Lawrence, through the Lawrence Community Shelter Services, but then they can't get the housing, and they're stuck there at the shelter. So we can definitely help them, again, as we've all been talking about, on multiple levels, through multiple programs. So that's where we need to focus for the shelter.
Jennifer Ananda.
So having, again, had the opportunity to tour, which was offered to all of us, I believe, we did get to see firsthand some of the many projects that they're doing there, including adding beds for the winter for overnight stays, providing work skills or Microsoft Excel skills, et cetera, to individuals who are remaining there, as well as computer access, developing their case management program. They're doing a lot of exciting things. I've worked in the world of nonprofit organizations, I've served on nonprofit organization boards. Having those profit, project-specific funds is vital. But the, the sweet spot is really that, that money that you can use for the things that you want to do. And those are more difficult to fund. I think that we have to balance what we give in order to give them, if, if we believe in their vision, and they have a clear vision that they've provided to us, supporting those operations as well is equally important, in my opinion.
Mike Anderson.
The only thing I'll add to the discussion already is that I want to say that I am 100% fully support what the shelter is doing with Trey and Mia, and the direction, the goals, the visions, the programs they have. But I want to echo the sentiment, this is not just something where you give a big lump sum. This is a sentiment of what programs are working, what programs are successful, and then how can we work towards implementing and giving funding for those exact programs to help. And the shelter, what a great resource it is. And here, these are helping people get back on their feet, to give back to society and to help everybody. This helps everyone. When they succeed, it helps absolutely everyone. So find the programs that are working well, funding those, working with the shelter, because again, when they succeed, Lawrence succeeds.
Basim Shaheen.
I'm going to go ahead and agree with everybody here about funding programs specifically. And another thing that, here's one thing I will never do, is defund or stop funding the shelter. The shelter, just like a library, just like schools, hospitals, is a must for a city to grow, and we've got to make sure they have all the needs taken care of in order to make this a better community for everybody.
Our next question submitted. What specific actions can the city take to ensure the safety and civil rights of the LGBTQIA community? What specific actions can the city take to ensure the safety and civil rights of the LGBTQIA community? And for this one, we begin with Lisa Larson.
We have an ordinance that actually provides protection for the community, those community members, and it's one that I obviously strongly support, and I will continue to support it. As, as long as we continue to enforce that, I believe we've done a good, a good job of making sure that those community, community members are safe.
Dustin Stumble Bear.
Mirroring what Commissioner Larson said, we have an ordinance, we need to enforce it. We also need to make ourselves open and aware to these members of our community, and to be allies with them, so, and listen to them when they bring complaints and bring possible issues that we aren't aware of. I have my own, I have my own privilege with my own perspective in the world, so I have to listen to these individuals when they come and talk to me about their perspective. And so if we need to modify anything over time, we need to make sure we're, that we are open and aware to all, all members of these different communities within Lawrence, so that they can trust us and talk to us, and know that we're going to look out for them. As, again, the commissioners have said, public safety on all levels is what the commission's job is supposed to be.
Jennifer Ananda.
So looking at specific actions, because we do have an ordinance, but we also know that ordinances aren't always a shield for, for behavior. So I think as far as the city, we can do a lot of things. We can look at when we develop new facilities, or move facilities, or expand facilities, or remodel facilities, creating non-gender-specific bathrooms. Things as simple as that can have a huge impact on the quality of life for an individual. I also think that we have to be aware of our own identities and the identities of the people that we're speaking with, and that is regardless of their identity, and, and pronoun use. Being aware of that, being respectful of that, and just maintaining a conscious awareness that, that this is an issue, and, and that we, we should address it respectfully. We should listen and, and work toward inclusivity of our entire community. And if part of our community doesn't feel like they're being included, then it is our responsibility to reach out to them, not to expect them to come to us.
Mike Anderson.
The only thing I want to add is, there's nothing more frustrating in this world when you feel like you haven't been heard. Absolutely nothing. I think one of the jobs of a city commissioner is to make yourself very public and go to different events, so people understand that you have their best interests in mind, that you want them to be heard. So it's going to any event where people are discussing LGBTQ issues, events they have, whatever it may be around Lawrence, to show them that you care about them, and it's not just these, any group, for that matter, to show that the city is looking out for you. And as me, as I, as a city commissioner, I want to do everything I can to make sure that you've been heard. And being seen, I think is part of that. Because I think it shows, it gives a message, that your idea is that you're not just putting your head down and going towards one thing, you don't just have your head strictly in a budget, that there's people out there and you're, you have their best interests in mind.
Basim Shaheen.
One reason why I love Lawrence, and this is one of them, they didn't even hesitate to sign the ordinance in Lawrence as well. And they're open, they listen, and, and Ananda just gave an amazing statement as well. And as long, they need to be heard, and they need to be safe. And Lawrence is the best place for that, I believe.
Matthew Herbert.
I think, obviously, I'll, you know, echo the fact that we do have an ordinance right now, but certainly, words on a page don't actually protect people. What we have to have are two things, and this comes from your vote. You need to vote for commissioners that are willing to have courageous conversations at the table in front of you. And I think one of the things that has been reflected by this commission over the last two years is we're willing to have those courageous conversations. Sometimes those conversations have happened in very unique places, but we have had them. The second thing is, is you need to elect a commission that's going to be accessible. I don't mean accessible at 5:45 on a Tuesday. I mean accessible round the clock. One of the things I'm proud of, and it's certainly made me a, a target in different, in different environments and with different media outlets, but when I was elected, I created a city commissioner Facebook page, which allowed the community to engage with me 24 hours a day, seven days a week. At present, we have nearly 1,500 members engaging on that nearly daily, which, to put that into perspective, the city uses a site called Lawrence Listens to engage with the community, and doesn't have the kind of engagement that my page has personally. One of the things that, that I will stand behind, for better or for worse, is that I've been one of the more accessible commissioners we have had in recent times, and I'm incredibly proud of that, and I don't look to change that in any way.
Again, you're listening to the Voter Education Coalition in KLWN 2017, General Election City Commission Candidate Forum. Going through submitted questions, now we still have time for a few more. Do you support the city's support for the WRAP program? Why or why not? Do you support the city's support for the WRAP program? W R A P, and why or why not? For this question, we begin with Dustin Stumbley-Bear.
Yes, I support it. Commissioner Herbert made an awesome argument for it earlier regarding how it helps people get the care they need. At a very young age, we begin to identify and assist them as necessary, and get them those services that they'll be able to be set up for, and be a productive member of our society throughout the rest of their life, so, that's a pretty easy one, I think. Sorry.
Jennifer Ananda.
Yes, I do support the WRAP project program as a social worker, as someone who has worked in this field for a very long time, not, not youth education necessarily, however, I understand the importance of early intervention in the lives of children, particularly if they are experiencing any myriad of socioeconomic, or social, or cultural issues, and so absolutely I support the WRAP program.
Mike Anderson.
Absolutely, I do. I was playing basketball in college, and there was one practice where I passed it to a fellow who was on the sideline, and he turned the ball over, and the coach didn't yell at him, the coach yelled at me, and the coach said, "Mike, your job in that situation is to put everybody in a position that helps them succeed." And I want to echo that metaphor for the city commission, your job is to make sure you have services to allow everyone in Lawrence to succeed, and this program very much does that, and that's why I'm in support of it.
Basam Shaheen.
Yes, I'm very much supportive of the WRAP program. Again, I do believe that we have a mental health crisis, and they try their best to help with situations like that as well, and I also love that the county commission is a part of this as well, and do, and, but yeah, I do support it.
Matthew Herbert.
Well, I sat at a table right there in June 2015, and suggested to the city commission that for the first time in a decade, we put it back in the budget, and once, to this day, I consider one of the greatest victories I've had as a city commissioner. It's unfortunate that it happened 60 days into my two-year term, but it was, you know, for me to say anything other than I absolutely support it when I was the voice that brought it to the table for, for restoring the funding would be, you know, obviously, a lie. One, one of the conversations that, that we have to have as a community is, how do we gauge the success of our community? And it's very simple, you ask one question, "How are the children?" Okay? It doesn't matter how, you know, that someone like myself is doing in a community, because ultimately, what we need to look out for is not, "How does our community look today?", but are we making decisions that are going to enable us 20 years from now to have a community that's better than it is today? How are the children? When we look at mental health services in this community, we've completely forgotten that question for a very long time, and focused only on adult care. We are finally at a place where we have restored funding to a program that asks the question, "How are the children?", and I'm grateful for that, I'll stand behind that, and I'll continue to fight and advocate for that funding. My wife and I are members of the Burton Ash Society, it's something we hold very near and dear to our hearts at home, as well as on the commission.
Lisa Larson.
Yeah, definitely, the WRAP program has been an intricate part, integral part of our social network, as I would call it. Anytime we can provide early age intervention for, for children with mental health issues, or law enforcement side, I think that we'll be a better community for it, and we've got to continue with these types of programs. The earlier we can work with them, the better we'll be in the long run for our community.
One more question? Okay, time for one more question here. Do you anticipate ordinance concerning short-term rentals such as Airbnb? Do you anticipate ordinance concerning short-term rentals such as Airbnb? On the topic of short-term rentals, we'll begin back at the beginning, Jennifer Ananda.
Yes, I believe that there is a lot of conversation happening around short-term rentals, including listening sessions, and, and staff are working on a recommendation for the city commission around this issue, going door to door. I've spoken with individuals for whom this is a huge concern, and so I'm thankful that we're giving our residents an opportunity to have this conversation. I, I think that we can expect that relatively shortly coming forward, because I know it's important to not only individuals who want to provide Airbnb services, but the neighborhoods in which those individuals and their homes reside, and how that's going to work. I know that there are several things that they're going to have to address, including, you know, whether or not the individuals who own the, the potential Airbnb rentals reside within that location or not. I've also had experiences where individuals have visited our community, had a wonderful experience at an Airbnb, so I think that there is a lot to consider when looking at this issue, and I do anticipate an ordinance regarding short-term rentals proposal very soon.
Mike Anderson.
This is an issue very much so that should be on our foremost, and we should be discussing this very soon. I look forward to meeting with the city and seeing what they have, and what studies they've found, and what they, arguments for that. And I think this goes back to a, a big issue too, of that, you know, when I ran two years ago, this wasn't even on our radar at that point, and that goes to show you that, when you're voting for a city commissioner, and I love talking about these issues, but when you're voting for someone, you're also voting for someone who you think, hey, in four years down the line, we don't know every issue's going to come up, we don't know every issue's going to come up in two years. None of, very few of these questions were actually asked last time I did this. What does that show you? What I'm hoping that shows you then, is that you vote for someone who you know, when the issue comes up, is going to study it thoroughly, not make a decision to the very end, to remain open to all possibilities, look through all the information, synthesize it, and then make the best possible outcome you can for all of Lawrence. Not just a small group of people, but for all of Lawrence. And if anything, this forum has shown us too, and this issue coming up, which wasn't even on our radar, is that these issues are going to come up, and they might, this issue might not be in a forum right now, but I'm hoping you choose someone who'll be ready when the issue comes up to make the best possible choice for Lawrence.
Basam Shaheen.
I am not one to take jobs out of people, and, I mean, I didn't state it right, but I, I will not take the opportunity of, when they make money, take that away from them, because this is a great source of funding for a lot of people that I know, and they need to treat it as an ordinance like any other homeowner. For example, if the only thing that I hear about is the nuisance, and the loud, and the partying that happens, and just like any other house with a party, I think it's okay to just go get fined, like we would if I had a party in my house, and it was loud, and my neighbor complained. But just to take that away from them, and bless their livelihood, and I believe that maybe just add an ordinance or two, maybe like, like a nuisance law, or something, if it's too loud, then, okay, but not take it out of the picture. Airbnb, I think, is here, and it's helping our tax base as well. Thank you.
Matthew Herbert.
As a city commissioner, you have to be very careful not to criminalize the actions of your, of your citizens, and take perfectly good, upstanding citizens and turn them into criminals overnight, and I think one thing we need to look at is, even though short-term rentals are currently illegal within city limits, get on Airbnb tonight and do a search, you're going to find 140 properties, 100, that's 140 criminals in our city, and I think we need to be very careful addressing, you know, addressing that, because this is an affordable housing issue. I had the opportunity last Sunday to walk and knock on some doors in the Castle on the Curve neighborhood, and went into a lady's house, and, and she said, "I want to show you something, I want to show you what affordable housing means to me." She walked me upstairs to a bedroom in her home that she rents out. She says, "This is why I still can live in this house." And that hit with me, it, it touched me on kind of a personal level, because someone very near and dear to me, in my family, makes use of their home for their cancer treatments. That's how they pay for them, is by using their home as an Airbnb. For a lot of people in this community, this is what affordable housing looks like. It's not, "How do I get into a home?", it's, "How do the decisions of the city commission keep me from losing my home?"
Lisa Larson.
First of all, I would like to invite everybody to our city commission work session on November 14th. We're going to have a full discussion on the Airbnb situation, and I welcome comments from citizens. I've actually been getting quite a bit of conversations with, one-on-one with various citizens who actually have Airbnbs in their home, and I, I believe that, obviously, this is an issue, and it's going to be addressed. We will have some ordinances, there will be some level of Airbnbs that will be allowed. How they will be structured, I don't know yet, until we hear what staff has offered, as well as what I hear from the citizens. I don't think we should circumvent entrepreneurship, but at the same time, we need to protect our neighborhoods, because there is a concern that folks are out there just buying houses for that sole purpose. We need to make sure there's a balance, and that's what I'm going to look for.
Dustin Stumbley-Bear.
Yeah, I've known, I've heard about this issue for several months, as different people, again, we've all been out knocking doors, talking with people, and they bring it up as a safety issue, that they don't know who is renting near them, they don't know if there is an owner that is living in that house, so they, people aren't against it, the people I've chatted with, they are not against Airbnbs in this town, they just want a little more regulation, just for their safety, and for the aspect of, as we talked about tourism, these individuals are gaining off of the Lawrence Tourism Department, so it's not owing too far to ask you pay that small percentage for what you're benefiting from. You're benefiting from the advertising, you should help pay for it a little. Again, that's something that staff may or may not put forward, and we will see, again, the November work session, I look forward to it.
Well, thank you all for joining us for the Voter Education Coalition on 1320 KLWN FM 101.7 for our forum. You can re-watch the forum anytime on the City of Lawrence YouTube channel, the Voter Education Coalition's website, and it will be on klwn.com in the next several days, plus re-aireings on our radio station. Special thanks to the City of Lawrence, and to all of you, the candidates, for joining us, and to the audience as well. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, Eric.